United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so we'll start out with roll call. Commissioner Tierney.
Here.
Commissioner Wernick.
Here.
Commissioner Dawson.
Here.
And Commissioner Havel here. We have Commissioners Strauss and Derby out, and then Commissioner Gabriel has recused himself from this evening's hearing because of his relationship with the project applicant. Moving on from there, do I have a motion on the approval of the final agenda for this evening's?
So moved.
Second.
Let's just go through a quick vote. Commissioner Tierney.
Aye.
Commissioner Wernick.
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
And aye for me. Next, we have public comment, and this is comment for anything that's not on tonight's agenda. So if there's something that is on your mind and you want to talk about it and it's not on tonight's agenda, right now is your moment. Seeing no one approaching the podium, I'll close the public comment for unrelated items. Moving on to our consent calendar, we have approval of the planning commission minutes of the June 26, 2017 hearing. At that hearing, we had Commissioners Wernick, Dawson, Strauss, and Tierney present. Commissioner Derby and myself were both absent. So we have three of the commissioners here that were present, of the four commissioners that were present for that evening. So I believe that constitutes a quorum for a motion on this item.
That's correct.
Vote on this item, okay.
I would move approval of the minutes as presented.
Second.
Very well. Commissioner Tierney.
Aye.
Commissioner Wernick.
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
And I will abstain. The next item is approval of the minutes from November 6, 2017, planning commission.
Move to approve as presented.
Very well.
Second.
Okay, we'll take vote. Commissioner Tierney.
Aye.
Commissioner Wernick.
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
And aye as well. Now, we move to the big agenda item this evening. We have before us the Park a Pup use permit and design review application. And I will turn it over to staff for their presentation.
Thank you. So this item is a use permit request to allow the construction and operation of a dog boarding facility along with dog grooming and a retail store in a proposed 12,123 square foot two-story building. The project site is located at 7586 Redwood Boulevard on the east side of the street, north of Golden Gate Place and south of Rush Creek Place. The site is accessed from the local access lane. The subject parcel is approximately 8,000 square feet in size and is currently improved with two structures totaling approximately 7,000 square feet. The smart railroad tracks and the North Marine Water District site are located to the east. A recycling facility is located to the south. A vacant commercial building to the north and to the north. The property is relatively flat with elevations ranging from eight to 10 feet above sea level. The proposed 12,000 square foot two-story building is 26 feet tall. 10 off-street parking spaces are provided, proposed along the northern property line. Landscaping is proposed along the west, north, and east property lines, and two street trees are proposed in the sidewalk. The building includes 103 kennels and indoor dog play areas, an approximately 1,000 square foot retail store, dog grooming area, plus employee office space. Proposed hours of operations are 7:30 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, and 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Saturday and Sunday. The applicant has prepared an extensive operational statement, which was included in attachment A of the staff report, and the project plans are included in attachment six. A neighborhood meeting was held on April 26, 2017 at the project location. Three persons attended the meeting. Concerns addressed by the three attendees included noise from barking dogs, impacts on property values, and consistency with the North Redwood Boulevard corridor study. At the time of the neighborhood meeting, an outdoor play area was proposed. Since then, the applicant has revised the site plan, and now the facility is completely indoors. The DRC held a public hearing on October 18, 2017. One person spoke during the public comment period. That commenter stated that she represented the neighbor to the north and was concerned with odor, noise, and consistency with the North Redwood Boulevard corridor study. The DRC was supportive of the site design and architecture and commended the applicant for investing in the area. The DRC unanimously voted, with two members absent, to recommend that the planning commission approve the site design and architecture as presented. Their recommendation included two conditions of approval. One, to bring the project back to the DRC should it be approved for final design approval of the architecture and landscaping. And the second condition was regarding the art program, to bring that back before the DRC for compliance with that art program. The DRC staff report and draft minutes are included in attachments two and three of the staff report. The DRC staff report includes an analysis of the project's conformance with the North Redwood Boulevard corridor study. Staff and the DRC did find that the project, the design elements of the project conform to the corridor study. The project is categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to CECL guidelines sections 15332 for infill development projects. This section exempts projects that are consistent with the city's general plan and zoning code that are on sites less than five acres in size, that can be served by all required utilities, and would not result in significant impacts related to traffic, noise, air quality, or water quality. The project site is designated commercial-industrial on the 1996 general plan land use map. The commercial-industrial designation allows a wide range of commercial-industrial uses, including retail and service uses. The CI district permits a floor area ratio of up to 1.0, and the proposed FAR floor area ratio of this project is 0.67. The staff report includes an analysis of the project's consistency with applicable general plan policies. Staff also completed an advisory review of the draft general plan 2035 document. The draft land use designation at the site is general commercial. The proposed use would be allowed in the general commercial designation upon approval of a use permit in the coinciding general commercial zoning designation should the draft general plan move forward as currently written. The site is designated commercial-industrial in the Nevada municipal code. Dog boarding and animal grooming facilities are allowed in the commercial-industrial district upon approval of a use permit. The project has been reviewed for consistency with applicable development standards, and staff has determined that the project is consistent with those development standards. The applicant hired an environmental noise consultant to model anticipated noises from the facility. The noise consultant found that anticipated noise levels would be below maximum levels prescribed in both the general plan and the municipal code. And the applicant also has a detailed cleaning procedures to reduce odor, and those procedures got left out of the packet you received, but we did distribute those procedures, and they're in front of you. The applicant has requested a waiver of the permanent loading facility that would typically be required of the zoning code. Nevada municipal code section 19.30.110.D allows the director to waive all or part of the requirements if it is found that unusual circumstances unique to the project site or the project make the requirement unattainable or unnecessary. Staff has done a review of the applicant's request of the project site and the municipal code, and is recommending that the permanent loading space, that it's not necessary given the operational components of the proposed project. the operational components of the proposed project. So there are five findings that the planning commission must make and support in order to approve a use permit, and those findings are detailed on pages 13 through 15 of the staff report. Additionally, there are three design review findings required to approve the design review portion of the project. The design review application is analyzed, and detailed findings are included in the DRC staff report, which is also attached to this staff report in Attachment Three. The planning commission does recommend that the planning commission, planning staff recommends that the planning commission adopt the resolution approving a categorical exemption, granting a use permit to allow the construction of the proposed improvements and operation of the proposed dog boarding and grooming facility and ancillary retail use and the project's design. And the draft resolution is included in Attachment One. There were two errors in the resolution related to dates. The first edit is under the fifth whereas. It currently reads a November 20 date for this hearing, and that should read December 4, 2017. And in the fifth whereas, it references a November 10 date for publication in the Marin IJ, and that should reference November 22, 2017. And staff is available to answer any questions, and the applicant and his representatives are present also. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. And thank you for the clarification of how to clean a dog kennel that we're in. I wasn't sure if that was a subtle hint to myself and my fellow commissioners. I would also like to note that the commissioners are in receipt of, earlier in the week that we were, or last week, I should say, we were emailed a letter from Peter Baer Jr. voicing his support of the project. So we're in receipt of that correspondence as well. So to my fellow commissioners, does anybody have any questions of staff in review of the materials? I'll start with Commissioner Tierney.
You had said in your report that evaluating the North Redwood Corridor Study, that you found this to be consistent. Could you elaborate a little bit further? Because there were a number of variations and considerable public input.
Yeah, so let me get to that section. So what staff did was take a look at the North Redwood Boulevard corridor study and looked at the design, the guidelines of that study. And those are bulleted in the DRC staff report commencing on page six of that staff report, or page 53 in the upper right corner of today's packet. And I can briefly go through those. Okay. So the first one was create a retail development composed of small shops and/or large retailers of 20,000 to 40,000 square feet each. So this proposal is a 12,000 square foot building and considered a service use with a retail component. And given the current state of retail, staff felt that the fulfillment of a lifestyle retail center that was envisioned for the North Redwood Boulevard corridor could be tens of years off, given the current state of retail development in the United States. But the applicant and along with his architect did design the building floor plate so it could accommodate different uses in the future. You'll notice that the kennel area is a 40-foot-wide floor plate, includes two stairwells and an elevator shaft, including an elevator. And then it also has sort of that wider storefront with windows along the street and has a 24-foot-wide access to the parking lot, but the parking lot is largely shielded by the building. The next point, it states allow for second and/or third-story office or recreational space if practical. So this does not, this does have a second floor, but that does not have office or recreational space. But again, staff felt that the building could be repurposed for a different use in the future should the current state of retail change and there be more of a demand for Going on, the next point, incorporate extensive landscaping with shade trees. So there are two street trees proposed in grates within the proposed eight-foot sidewalk. And then additionally, there are 10 trees proposed throughout the project development. I think there's eight or nine along the north property line and three or four in the rear setback. Next up, the document states provide pedestrian and bicycle connections between retailers and development on the East Redwood South area. Sorry, let me start over. Prepare pedestrian and bicycle connections between retailers to development on the East Redwood South subarea to the south to pedestrian and bicycle facilities along the Smart Corridor and along Redwood Boulevard. So the applicant is proposing a new eight-foot-wide raised sidewalk along the frontage of his property. And then there are Class II bicycle lanes that exist on the north and southbound lanes of the main Redwood Boulevard through streets. And then on the local access lane, due to the low current and anticipated traffic, it was felt that this kind of shared, dedicated bike lanes wouldn't be necessary, given the short length of the block and the anticipated traffic. Next up, create wide pedestrian sidewalks and a bicycle path along the Redwood Boulevard frontage. So they have proposed a new eight-foot-wide sidewalk in front of the building, and I mentioned the bicycle lanes along Redwood. Next up, locate buildings near the Redwood Boulevard frontage with display windows and/or shop entries where practical facing the street. And as you can see on the architectural drawings, the elevations, most of the frontage, a majority of the frontage along Redwood is glazing with glass windows that look into the retail area, the dog grooming area, and some of the office space, the employee office space towards the south end of the building. Next up, minimize views of parking areas from Redwood Boulevard, typically by locating parking behind the buildings. The parking is accessed through a 24-foot-wide access driveway, but then it is kind of tucked in behind the entrance feature, which is on the northerly side of the building. Structures visible from public view corridors and vantage points should incorporate four-sided architecture. And the architect is here and the applicant, and they will be going through the slides of the building that was provided in the packet. And staff feels that the northwest and east elevations does have architectural detailings, including a variety of material and windows. The south side of the building is located at a zero lot line, and on that side, there aren't any windows, and it's mainly just a CMU brick with the anticipation that as additional development occurs in the corridor, that property to the south may want to utilize a zero lot line against this building to better utilize the entire site of the property. So those were the design-related guidelines that we went through with the North Redwood Boulevard corridor study. So I think the main one that isn't 100% today is the envision of a solely retail lifestyle use of the building.
Thank you. Sure. Commissioner Wernick? Any questions?
Yeah, my first question is actually for the applicant. If Mr. Dana could take the stand. I just have a question. It'd be best if you stand there so we can hear you when you answer. So over the weekend, I decided to go down and take a look at your facility in San Rafael just to kind of see what you do. And to be honest, I wasn't impressed with what I saw. Now, I only saw from the front, but your street front is a wee bit shabby. So I thought it would just be nice to give you an opportunity to tell us a little bit about what you do in San Rafael. Do you own that property or lease that property? Perhaps the condition of the property is because you are not the owner of the property. So I'm just interested in that. So that's my first question. So if you just can, let me know a little bit about your business in San Rafael, not so much about, from the staff report, I got plenty of information about how many dogs you see a week and length of time people stay there and all of that. But I'm concerned about the condition of the building because we have put tremendous effort into studying the North Redwood Corridor, and I know, I'm sure I share the same concern throughout the commission here, that any reinvestment in the North Redwood Corridor needs to be not only top quality, and it looks top quality, but that it will be maintained in the future as well by the owner. So can you just give me a little information about the San Rafael facility?
Yeah, absolutely. Can you hear me well?
Yes.
So I do not own the property. I do lease the property. And when I had the opportunity to purchase the business from the existing owners, the landlord was not, when I purchased the business originally, I knew there was a lot of work that needed to be put into the actual property, into the kennels for the dog's sake and everything. And you're right, it doesn't look fabulous from the front. So when I purchased the business, I had a long discussion with the landlord because I had interest in putting money into the actual business, into the buildings, and wanted to buy the property so I can get my investment back forever long that might be. And he did not want to sell. He has some vision of what he wants to do with that down the line. I was also unable to negotiate a long-term lease with him. So again, it kind of limited the amount of money I was able to invest into the business. So what I ended up doing was, instead of investing in the front, I decided the better place to invest it would be in the back for the dogs, not really kind of what people see in the front. It's more about what the dogs and their comfort and their safety. So a lot of the money went back there. So you won't really kind of see the kennel itself and the environment until you walk inside, and yes, the reception area isn't that pleasant, that wonderful. But I do have pictures if I can just pass them.
Yeah, that would be great.
So that was, I'll go picture by picture. So you guys can follow along. I had a feeling this was going to get brought up. Thank you. So the first picture you see there, and I'm sorry, I don't have copies for all you guys, but the first picture you see was the electrical mess that I walked into with the property. I had circuit breakers that weren't popping when they were being overloaded. There were exposed electrical wires just lying all around. Sockets were melting when I was running heaters. So I ended up spending a lot of money rewiring the entire property. And the landlord, he's a great landlord, but he was very clear as to how much money he was willing to put into the property, and, which is basically not very much. And so that was an investment that I made, rewired the entire building, the entire place. The second picture of what you see, actually, I kind of forget which one it was. I think it's the play area. So in the top three pictures, the one on the far left, sorry, can I borrow somebody's? Okay, great. So the top-left picture is a picture of what the play yard looked like and about 17 to 20 kennels looked like. So this was built up in the late 60s, early 70s, and they basically just planted four-by-four posts in the ground and stapled chicken wire to it. I never used those for boarding because there were rusted nails just kind of sticking all over the place. But the area to the right of that, that was the play yard that they used. So as you can see, kind of moving along, the kennel's a little bit more of a close-up picture of them in the center. And then the far right is, well, me tearing it down. The picture in the middle, you see, that is actually the area of those top three pictures of what it is now. So we put in four daycare kennels, and so they have an indoor/outdoor enclosure and also a slab of cement. And we expanded the play yard. We doubled the size to about 1,500 square feet, and we installed canine grass. It's a bi-forever lawn. It's a synthetic grass that's specifically designed for dog kennels and dog uses. It's all drainable, cleanable, it's antimicrobial blades, and I'll be kind of going over that.
And that's what you'd be using in this facility as well?
Absolutely, yes. We've loved the product ever since we installed it. It helps great with cleanup and making sure that the place stays odor-free.
Okay. All right, I just needed to.
No worries.
I needed to get that one covered first because, I mean, I'm not a dog owner, so and I, you know, I don't ever totally want to judge a book by its cover. I assume that what was behind the facade was an improvement from the front, but I appreciate you bringing these because that does help clarify that. And we did invest in the property as well.
Absolutely. And, you know, on that note, I was going to bring it up in the little talk, but I did want to say that what I envisioned of what I wanted to do with San Rafael, I'm really hoping I get the opportunity to do that in Nevada. So.
And so that's really why you came to Nevada. You wanted to do, well, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I'm assuming you had some other vision.
Right, and I'm just limited with the lease, even after talking to landlord. He's talking about a year-to-year lease with me now, and so there was just real no future because there is just a ton of money that needs to be put into it. In my opinion, the main building needs just to be taken down with a bulldozer. My grandma was thoughtful enough to let me know that when I first bought the building. Yeah, but I do want to do more with it. It's just it's very limited with what I can invest and get back in return.
Okay. All right, thank you. I have more later, but go ahead.
Commissioner Dawson, any questions?
No.
Okay. I don't have any questions at this time either. So next up, I would like to open up the public comments portion of the evening. Right, I'm going to start, yeah. And with the comments, what we're going to do is we're going to start with the project applicant, and then we'll follow with any other speakers that would like to speak on this item. There are cards that you can fill out. You can put your name and interests. They're not required. We like to have them just so we can keep track of who spoke and make sure we're consistent with our records. But with that, I'll turn it over to the project applicant. I believe per our agenda, you have 20 minutes for your presentation.
Oh, great. I should be well under that. Okay, let me see. Get some time to get organized. So I apologize if I repeat some of the things I'd previously mentioned in regards to the San Rafael location. But good evening, planning commission. Thank you for taking the time to hear my project. My name is Paul Dana. I'm a lifetime Marin resident. I was born, raised, and schooled in the Bay Area, and I have no intentions of leaving. My wife and I recently had our first child, three and a half months ago, and we're, sorry. We're excited for her to grow up in Marin. I've worked in the dog industry for over 20 years. My professional animal career didn't start until 2003, when I got a job as a vet tech in a veterinary hospital in San Francisco. During those seven years, I volunteered at various rescue organizations where I expanded my knowledge and grew my experience. During one of those volunteer events, I met with a family who ran Park-a-Pup in San Rafael. They were an elderly couple, but they were interested in moving on and retiring. When I purchased the property, it was in serious need of repair and maintenance. I was unsuccessful in extending a long-term lease with my landlord and also an option to purchase the property in the future. to purchase the property in the future. With a short-term lease, I made the improvements where I felt necessary for the safety and health of the pets. However, even with the minor/major improvements I was able to make, Park-a-Pup in San Rafael did become a success. Sorry, I should have been on that slide. So, the building to the right, that was not our first design, as Brett mentioned. After the neighborhood meeting and after the first staff report we received, we realized that we need a lot of work. We had a lot of stuff to work on. The neighbor concerns about odor and sound, and also that the original design did not fit with the North Redwood Boulevard Corridor plan. So, what we developed was, and thank you to my architect, Dan McDonald, he developed this beautiful building, which is a two-story dog hotel. We're kind of going away from this whole idea of a dog kennel and doing what the industry is kind of moving towards. So, we have two stories, and the front is 1,000 square feet of retail space. The current site, as you can see, there, on the left side, that is where our property is. And on the right, you'll see a street view of it, and the current area is blighted, industrial or vacant. Our immediate neighbors, our neighbor to the north on the left-hand side, and our neighbor to the south on the right-hand side. This is the project site and the two main buildings that are on it. As you can see, it looks like termites holding hands, keeping the building up. And so, we will be tearing down the buildings and starting fresh. So, after meeting with the Design Review Commission, they unanimously found the project to be consistent with the general plan and all applicable codes. It would create a desirable environment for the occupants, neighbors, and visiting public. It would not be materially injurious to the properties or improvements in the vicinity, and it does not interfere with the use and enjoyment of neighboring existing or future Dog boarding has changed. The typical post-World War II dog boarding facility is what you see off to the left, behind that big red X. And those typically consisted of chain link fencing and a dog crate. That model is no longer acceptable. Most people are now looking for amenities that match their own when they go on vacation. So, and that is because pets in themselves have become members of the family and enjoy the same amenities as their owners, sometimes more, so. And they expect more for when they go and they make their reservation at their hotel, that their dogs enjoy the same reservation. As you see on the bottom right, that is actually a dog hotel with a reception area and all that, nice fake flowers and all that stuff. Okay, so, brick-and-mortar retail is under siege by e-commerce. The LA Times wrote an article stating that 25% of shopping malls will close in the next five years because of e-commerce. Shopping centers are now looking for ways to attract customers on a regular basis to their retailers. With the pet industry growing annually 3.4% from 2008 to 2013, the shopping centers saw an opportunity to use them to their advantage. So, not only do they see the increase in sales, but they are also seeing the foot traffic increase to these shopping centers. Park-a-Pup alone has 1,900, Park-a-Pup in San Rafael has 1,900 clients. And the interesting fact about those 1,900 clients is only 600 of them live in San Rafael. That means 1,300 clients travel from all over the Bay Area to San Rafael to use our So, the relationship has proven to be successful between shopping centers and dog hotels. And just so you don't think I'm making it up, here are three examples of PetSmart Hotels within a 75-mile radius of Nevada. Now, these were three of nine we found of PetSmart alone. And as you can see with the shopping centers, the arrows are pointing to the dog boarding facilities, the dog hotels, and they're smack dab in the center of these shopping malls and these shopping centers. And retailers and shops like Trader Joe's, Barnes &amp; Noble, Sees Candy, TJ Maxx, Starbucks, Home Goods, Best Buy, Office Depot are not afraid to be next to the dog hotel. They're actually encouraged by it. And the relationship is basically organic. Nevada needs more boarding, dog boarding facilities, not only for the existing retailers, but for the capacity of the city. According to the American Veterinary Medical Association, Nevada has over 11,000 dogs and only five boarding facilities. That number was according to Yelp. Many Nevada residents are forced to leave Nevada to use facilities elsewhere. Park-a-Pup in San Rafael has over 70 clients from the city of Nevada who travel to San Rafael to use our services. The benefit also for having more boarding facilities is having space to house displaced pets in regional disasters. Park-a-Pup was completely booked up throughout October because of displaced pets from the Sonoma fire. The CDC advises people on their website to use boarding facilities when dogs and humans are, well, not for the humans, but when dogs are needing to be evacuated. Okay, so, these are the design changes to help with the neighbor concerns after our neighborhood meeting. So, the design changes for noise is the building is now fully enclosed. We have more concrete block walls than previously designed, non-operable double-glazed windows, no outdoor dog activities, the play area will be inside, and the sound levels will be lower than allowed by all applicable regulations. As mentioned by Brett, we did contact an acoustical engineer, Illingworth &amp; Rodkin, to create the sound study for the original design. And even with that original design, we were within tolerable levels for the decibels that were created by the facility. I reached out to Illingworth &amp; Rodkin again to ask them to revise their statement and their report with the new design. And they found that the sound levels to our nearest neighbor will be 41 to 46 decibels. That is lower than a quiet urban area during the daytime and about the sound level of a quiet urban area in the nighttime. For the odor, as I had mentioned before, we will be using canine grass. It's a product made by Forever Lawn, and it is a product specifically designed for dog kennels and their use to help with clean environment and clean area for the pets. It's engineered for dog waste. It has antimicrobial blades. It's engineered for drainage, as you can see the engineering that they have on the top right. And we'll also be using natural enzymes for cleanup that will neutralize odor and break down organic matter. We also contacted another engineer. Her name is Katie Calendar, and she works at MSA Engineering, and she's the mechanical project manager. And we reached out to see what we could further do with the odor. And she stated, "It is not typical for a kennel to be providing specific odor control elements to prevent odors to the exterior." However, we wanted her to help us mitigate this even further, and we asked her what we could do. And she said that using charcoal filters at exhaust fan grills will filter everything prior to being exposed to the exterior, which we will be doing. Financial benefits from the project will exceed $8 million in five years. New sales tax from Park-a-Pup retail sales, over $100,000. New property tax on new Park-a-Pup construction, over $150,000. Wages and benefits for new jobs created at Park-a-Pup, over $2.7 million. Labor hired and materials purchased for new construction at Park-a-Pup, over $3 million. Sales tax paid on material purchased at Park-a-Pup Construction, close to $130,000. New spending at local stores and restaurants by new out-of-town customers driving to Park-a-Pup, over $2.2 million. In short, Park-a-Pup Nevada will create new jobs, raise new revenue through sales tax and property tax, bring over 1,000 new customers to local shops and restaurants, help existing businesses survive the siege by e-commerce, provide a needed service to the community, attract new stores, restaurants, and businesses to the North Redwood Boulevard Corridor, provide a valuable resource after fires and earthquakes, and make your dog happy. So, I also, I wanted to end it with this. Myself and my team reviewed the conditions of approval, and we were comfortable that we can satisfy all of them, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Before you leave the podium there, fellow commissioners, does anybody have any questions of the applicant that they'd like to ask beyond what was asked before? Nope? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, with that, is there anybody else who would like to speak regarding this item tonight? I'll tell you what, why don't, why don't we just start on this side of the room? And madam, in the front row here, why don't you go first, and then we'll go from there? Thank you.
Thank you very much. My name's Leela Tweed. I live in Nevada, and I have one of those 11,000 dogs living at our home. It will be wonderful for you to consider this beautiful building for us to take our dogs. I have taken my dog not to Park-a-Pup, but I have taken it to other facilities here in Nevada. And, as this gentleman said, they are not very satisfactory. They're old, they're dirty, and when I come back, I always wonder how many fleas my dog has had on it. So, I'm sure when I send it to a place like this, and if the owners are as diligent as they say they are, my dog will be very happy. We live very close to the Marin Humane Society, and on the issue of barking and smells over the last 20-plus years, where we drive by, I have never really heard any dogs barking as if they were in a cage. I hear them when they're out in the front playing and happy. And the smells, I've never smelled anything. So, I think with the precautions you're taking with this building and controlling the smells and the noise, you're on the right track. And I'd like to ask one more thing, with your permission. If everybody here in favor of this building and the approval, would please stand and just show that they're in favor of this with your approval?
Sure.
Okay, please stand up. Oh, it's wonderful. Thank you very much. Okay, that's it for me.
Thank you. Next, I do have a speaker card for Aldo Gigliotti?
My name's Aldo Gigliotti. I'm a resident. I resided at Atherton Ranch, which is just on the other side, on the west side of Redwood. I'm one of the three individuals who attended the April meeting. I think the current design and Dan and your contribution. The project itself, I don't have anything to say about. My main concern at this point has to do with what we, from the business community, and I'm a business owner, have been involved in Nevada for a long time. The intent of the North Redwood Corridor was to take that last chunk of commercial property within the city and expand it. 1,000 square feet of retail space is not really what was intended. And the concern that I have, though the owner of the property to the north and to the south isn't present today, but he was present at the April meeting, and so, it, what I would ask the Planning Commission to consider is what impact does this particular project have on the ability to further develop the Redwood Corridor? We're looking at a 12,000-square-foot space out of, how many acres are there from the feed store and Shamrock and the old trailer park? And so, that is my reservation. It's tough when it's the first project, but we have talked about, and I'm not sure that we're 10 years out, but from the business community, we would like to see and stop some of the leakage that currently occurs by seeing commercial development. And I have been an animal owner and lover for a long, long time, so I don't have any objections in that regard. But, my main objection at this point in time has to do with the appropriateness of that particular facility at its current location. It's a dramatic improvement from what's there. I mean, what's there right now isn't worth anything. And so, I would normally encourage a landowner to invest in Nevada, and I compliment him on the changes that they made from the initial proposal that I saw in April to the one that was presented today. But, my main reservation has to do with what impact is it going to have? Things have not moved very quickly in Nevada in the last 15 or 20 years. And so, you're now starting to see some movement. What impact will it have? And it's, I would ask staff to consider contacting the owner of the property that acquired the Shamrock place and owns the two properties to the north. He's a developer, he's looking at the other properties. I don't know, I can't speak for him, but we within the business community looked at creating a lifestyle, a major retail outlet, which very well may include whether it's the Park-a-Pup or PetSmart or somebody else, but it's a cohesive plan and it's not done piecemeal that would prevent us from being able to move forward in the future. So, that's my only comment.
Thank you. I don't have any other speaker cards, but are there others that would like to speak? I see a woman in the back in the red jacket. If you'd approach the, and then madam in the black sweater, you can speak after her. And I should mention that the speakers in the audience, we have three minutes allotted for you per our agenda.
Hi, my name is Edie Heller. I live in San Anselmo.
Would you be kind enough just to speak into the mic so everybody can hear what you're saying? Thanks.
I live in San Anselmo, and I've been taking my little dog here three times a week to Park-a-Pup for over two years. And I know it looks funky on the outside, but my dog is so happy to get in there, and he's exhausted when he comes home. So, I can't speak for the new building or for Nevada, but I can speak to the character of Paul and all the people who work there. They're extremely caring. When I bring Teddy in in the morning, he goes right outside into the play area. There's always an attendant there, one of the people that works there in the play area with a hose, watching for little poop and whatever needs to be washed down. And they know him by name, and it's everybody that, all the customers that I see parking their cars and going in or coming out, their dogs can't wait to get through the door. So, it's a really good place in that sense. I hope, I wish Paul luck. I hope the San Rafael one doesn't get closed down because I'll have a problem. Traffic was terrible coming up here. Thank you.
Good evening, thanks for coming out.
Hi, my name is Vicki Kung. My husband and I are 25-year Marin residents, and we've had dogs for almost every moment of that. We are currently one of the 70-plus families that use Park-a-Pup, and we live in Nevada. And I can't say enough about the professionalism, the dedication to the care and comfort of what we consider our family member, Teddy Says Hey, the other Teddy. And I think this would be an incredible asset for the neighborhood. My husband and I also have business backgrounds. We've owned a business in Nevada. This isn't retail homesteading. This isn't, this is bringing a well-developed, much-needed retail concept with very well-laid-out financial benefits to the community into what is absolutely a blighted area. Dog owners spend a lot of money. Don't ask me how I know this. Bringing a lot of affluent people who care about their family members to this neighborhood of Nevada and giving us a chance to spend more money here will be nothing but beneficial. And I can't, again, can't... here, will be nothing but beneficial, and, uh, I can't, again, can't wait to have you in the neighborhood. It's gonna be great. So, thanks, Paul.
Thank you. Good evening. Thanks for being here.
Hey there. I'm Dr. Marcella Herbhauser, and I'm actually still on duty at the veterinary hospital in San Rafael. I work in the twenty-four hour hospital as an internal medicine specialist, and Paul has been my savior with my crazy golden retriever that I so unwisely purchased six and a half years ago, and needed to find a doggy daycare, uh, for him, and Paul was just opening up, and I had heard the scary stories of the Parker pet for people who lived in Marin for thirty years, and there was a new owner, so I thought, "Well, I'm just gonna go in and take a look." And I met Paul, and to me, I can tell you, as a veterinarian, you learn very quickly how to sum people up, to know how they take care of their pets, how they take care of their customers, how they take care of their clients, and he didn't know I was a veterinarian at the time, and toured me around the facility and talked about it, and then about a half an hour later, I told him. And, you know, he kinda faltered a bit and was like, "So what do you think?" I said, "Well, I think I'll be bringing my dog here in the next few months, when he's old enough." And I can tell you, within the last six years, I referred many people there, um, because they wanna trust me with who I trust my dog with. Um, and a part of the reason I trust that is it's not just Paul, it's what he builds around it, the heart and soul he puts into it, and the biggest problem is it's not a big enough place for somebody who's so good at doing this. And I can also tell you from experience, because my sister actually has owned huge doggy daycares in Southern California for twenty years, and I can tell you, if she had a plan like this to start with on the first one, she would've had a much happier time. It was not as well-thought-out. Um, it was not as even as big a worry about the neighbors, but it was a matter of quality control when you have that many pets up there in one time, as well as pleasing the neighbors, as well as pleasing the clients, and as well as pleasing your staff, because it's very difficult to have a ta- a staff that you trust in a setting like this, 'cause this is where I started out when I was fifteen, and Paul has that. He has excellent staff. They know him, they know the dogs, and they also will ask you if there's anything you have to worry about, and they'll tell you if anything wrong with the pet. So, not to get too much, you know, into the amount of care that he takes there, but, um, having lived through this as a family member, watching somebody go through it, um, knowing how much thought should be into it, um, and this is like the greatest chance I've been able to see the plan, hearing quips about it. Um, I told Paul that I would leave the floor of duty and come here and speak on his behalf, because, um, if you wanna talk about retail in your neighborhood, I promise you, from what I'm seeing, what people will do for their pets, these are the places they wanna keep them with people they trust. And I think it's much wiser to put a facility like this in, and have the retail follow it, just as you see which ones are doing, then hope and wait for the greatest multimillion-dollar mall that's gonna come in that we know has a lot more red tape and a lot, um, less personal investment of someone in the community. Nobody's gonna come in, in the community of Marin, and put all their own money up and build a multimillion-dollar mall. It's gonna take someone to take one thing like this, make it successful, and either you'll build around it, or I'd be happy as a clam to be next door to this. I'm only about, you know, ten minutes away now, so I'm pretty lucky if that one stays in business, if this one doesn't take over, but, um, I don't think, uh, you have anything to lose by doing this, so, thank you so much.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Trish Herman. I've been in Marin about seventeen years, um, originally born and raised in San Francisco, and I come out of the hotel industry. I worked for Four Seasons Hotel, Mobile Five-Star Hotel, and Intercontinental Hotels, both domestic and abroad, and I got a reference from my dog, Luca Giancarlo, to go to Park-a-Pup in San Rafael, and when I went to the outside, just as your experience, I thought, "I'm not leaving Luca Giancarlo here." But based on the recommendation of a long, long-lost friend, I went in, and I met Paul, and he took me around. Um, Luca Giancarlo is a happy camper. I only take him there two or three days a week. He's a happy guy. I turn the corner, he knows where he's going, and it's clean, it's well-maintained, and the staff are remarkable. Uh, they know my dog, um, they care for him. When he was sick before Paul called me, I came and picked him up, excuse me, came and picked him up. Um, Catherine, who really runs a lot of the daily operations, um, is a godsend. So if Nevada is interested in a small business owner really adding value to the neighborhood and to the community, they will approve Park-a-Pup. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak to this matter this evening? All right, seeing no other commenters, I will return this conversation back to the commission, and commissioners, do you have any, based on testimony and other information presented, do you have any further questions or comments for staff, or for one another? Yes, Commissioner Wernick?
Um, I think my questions probably are directed, um, to Paul, so maybe, sorry to put you on the spot, so, might be over and over and over. So, um, I'm not a dog owner, so, not that I wasn't raised with dogs, um, but our dog always went on vacation with us. We never left him anywhere. Um, so my questions are kind of about the facility itself. So you, originally when you designed this project, you had outdoor areas, and so it's been redesigned with the play area, the exercise area, um, inside the building.
Correct.
So, I mean, is that, if I were a dog owner, is that at all, like, not desirable? Do, do people tend to wanna have more outside area for their dog, or is, I mean, do you think that's gonna be a challenge for you at all?
I, I don't see it as a challenge. Um... Do you wanna answer? Um, I don't, I don't see it as a challenge. Uh, obviously, outdoor is, uh, what I'm used to and what I've done, but there are many facilities that use the indoor, and that's becoming the norm. Uh, indoor is actually a lot easier, um, to maintain and to work with the dogs, because when they're outside, you have to deal with the, the elements. When it's raining, you know, pools pool up, and you have to be concerned about disease and stagnant water of them drinking in it, stepping in it, licking their pads. Uh, and during the summertime, when it gets up to a hundred degrees, I know it gets pretty hot in Nevada, you have to have enough pools, and you have to keep a really close eye on the pets, and see if they're overheating, because the only way they really are able to release heat is by panting. And so, you know, when we work at, uh, San Rafael, we have mistures that we run. We use a lot of water, uh, just because we wanna make sure the dogs stay cool. We have a pool, um, but still, you know, we have big policies in place for all of our employees to know what heat stroke looks like. Um, so I would say indoor is actually exciting for me.
And there's, so there's other places. I mean, does PetSmart, is that how they do it?
Yeah, they're, they're completely indoor. Those... All three of these are indoors. Every single one of the nine that I'd mentioned in the seventy-five mile radius, they're all indoors, and they're all in shopping centers like this.
So did you kinda model it after what a, a place like PetSmart has done, then?
Not really. Um, so the original model, uh, I used, um, was similar to the one that I have in San Rafael. Uh, it's just something that I'm used to. I figured the transition between training one employee in Nevada to moving him to San Rafael would be a little bit easier to do. Um, but with the indoor facility, you know, it kinda puts me in a different ballpark, and it's an exciting ballpark to play in, because places like PetSmart, you know, they're running successfully with a hundred and fourteen rooms, a hundred and twenty-six rooms, a hundred and nine rooms, and, I'm sorry, I got off, off track, but, um, yeah, did I answer the question?
Just see, yeah, just, how you had modeled it. Were you, you know?
Oh yeah, so, um, basically, the way we modeled it was, and, um, my architect, Dan McDonald, uh, I kinda told him what I needed. This is how I wanted it to, how I needed a successful kennel to be run, and he kind of went with it, and we went through a few designs and a few shapes, and with the concerns, uh, that Brett actually brought up of, you know, what would be easier if this wasn't a success, and it needed to transition to office buildings. This is designed to be able to do both. It's designed to be able to be a dog kennel where, I know, Dan, you have the design somewhere around here. So, the way the design is right here, so we have, so this is the top floor, so this has more, um, of the suites than, um, the bottom floor. So they kinda go around like this, and in the center, we have the play yard. So what this allows us to do is it allows us to run play groups in the center of it. If we have some dogs that don't like other dogs, we can section it off, and it kinda allows us to be able to run play groups longer and keep dogs, um, separate if they don't necessarily get along with, uh, another dog.
So there's enough, I mean...
Yes.
There's enough area for dogs to really get a lot of exercise.
Oh, absolutely.
Some just, certain breeds, they're runners.
Yes, absolutely. So this is, I believe, a hundred and fifty feet, a hundred and fifty feet from end to end.
Okay.
So if we were to throw a ball, they'd be running for some time.
So Brittany Spaniel would be very happy.
Yeah. I think so.
Okay, I have one other question in it, and it does relate to your floor, floor plan. So, in the, on the first floor, um, you have your retail component, and I'm assuming, from looking at it, that when I would come in with my dog to check my dog in, that's the area, the reception area, where...
Right, so, so this...
Where he or she would get checked in.
This is the reception area right here.
Yeah.
Actually, I have a laser pointer. Yeah. Um, so that is the reception area right there, so that would be kind of the similar look, whoop, and feel as that on the bottom right. And up front here, and all this actually would be retail, so this is the parking right here, and so if you come and you park here, you walk down a little path, and you can enter right through here. If you're coming off the street, this is Redwood Boulevard, you'd walk in right through here. And so the first thing you would see is the retail, and it's, the doors are all the way at the front, so you kinda have to walk through all the retail before checking in.
And do you think you'll do that retail right away?
Oh, absolutely, a hundred percent.
Yeah, 'cause doggy accessories are very lucrative.
Right, so we, we actually have that, um, problem in San Rafael. Our, our reception area is rather small, uh, and I've had tons of clients who walk in there and they say, "Oh, I forgot treats, oh, I forgot a bed, I forgot a toy. You should sell things here." And I'm like, "Well, we don't have space, um, to do it." Um, so I'm really excited at the prospect of, uh, having some retail sales in there. Um, people walk in there, and I don't know whether it's a guilt thing, or, or whatever it is, but, you know, they just, they, they wanna buy things for their dogs.
I worked in a store at one point, and we sold a lot of dog, dog gifts. Um, that's the extent of my questions right now.
Great, thanks. Um, Director Brown, did you have something you'd like to add?
Oh, thanks, I'm dangerous with it. Uh, Bob Brown, Community Development Director. I just wanted to respond to Commissioner Tierney's question and the gentleman from Atherton Ranch about the relationship of this proposed use with the vision that we have for the North Redwood Boulevard corridor. So three years ago, we did the workshops, and, uh, both the public and the city were, were very enthused about the idea of retail in this corridor. Um, since then, the market has changed dramatically. Um, the internet is just killing, uh, brick-and-mortar retail, and so even established centers like Vinnie Joe's has problems identifying new retailers to take, uh, take the place of vacant space. Here, the ROIC, the owners of the, the center that has Trader Joe's, Dairyman's, and Shamrock have all struggled over the last three years to find potential retailers. We've met with any number of potential, uh, applicants, none of whom are really retailers, um, trying to see if they can modify their proposals and do a little retail, et cetera, but there is not the demand out there. Um, what I will say, though, is that the intention here in the draft general plan is to rezone the area from light industrial office, which it is now, or, no, it's not, it's, it's
Commercial.
Commercial-industrial, to, uh, general commercial. And general commercial still allows, uh, dog boarding and dog grooming as a, as a permissible use, as an allowed use. So in that sense, you know, again, while we say we would love to see retail in the corridor, there still are a myriad of, of uses allowed in the general commercial district, which is the intention for the zoning of this area, that are not strictly retail-related. And so those uses would still be allowable even under the new general plan. So I just wanna bring that to your attention, um, as you deliberate the, the compatibility of the land use with what we anticipate to be the future of the area.
Commissioner Tierney, did you have any further questions?
Well, no, I just comments and, you know, perhaps discussion, dialogue among the commission, um, and I, and I appreciate, you know, Bob's comments, um, and Aldo as well. Um, I, I think that that's, you know, the applicant has been tremendous as far as revisions and being a, addressing concerns from the neighborhood, and the support is, you know, apparent, um, and I, and it's a winner of, of a project. Um, the concern is that, you know, the idea was to have a fairly large-scale kind of, you know, project out there that was going to address a lot of other needs for Nevada, and, you know, it's really difficult to get dozens of individual property owners to get on the same page, but the idea was that let's put out the concept, let's spend the time, let's do the charrettes, let's try and, and make a big statement forward, and I, and the Chamber of Commerce, you know, kinda led the parade as far as, you know, we need to have outlets or what have you, you know, show up. Um, I, I think my decision comes down to, you know, do we wanna bird in the hand versus a flock in the bush, and, you know, I, I'd suggest that, you know, I'll take the one in the hand, that by showing interest in the area, um, and staff enunciated in their report quite well, that, you know, that could be incentive for other property owners to want to be able to take those, those larger steps and to, you know, incrementally wanna improve the areas. Perhaps it as well, you know, encourages hotels and things like that, that this area is on the move and, and we're going in the right direction, so, um, I'm just curious if, if you have any thoughts or any, you know, hesitations around those. I mean, I think it's, it's really a pretty solid project.
Commissioner Dawson?
Um, I, I would see this as a complementary project to actually the entire area. Um, the, the design of the building is such that it reflects a lot of the intents of the, uh, corridor plan. The building is out at the front of the street, instead of having the parking lot in front, um, being a zero lot line on one side makes it easier for the property to the south to redevelop and, but this building to create a continuous street frontage. Um, the location of this particular site in relation to that whole area, this is already somewhat of a constrained space anyway. This would be a challenging site, even if it were assembled with all the sites to the south to really do anything much different than what's being proposed here. So, um, to me, it seems like, you know, the use, whether the use attracts other commercial uses or not, um, I mean, it seems like that's sort of the way things are headed, but, um, the design flexibility of the building, if for whatever reason this were to, um, cease operations, certainly gives a lot more flexibility for something else to come in. So I see several benefits to, to this, and I would agree with the, um, your comment about bird in hand, so, that is all.
Thanks. Commissioner Wernick, do you wanna add to the comments?
Yeah, I mean, my, I, I would agree with Commissioner Tierney and Commissioner Dawson's comments. Um, I, you know, I've been involved, I think all of us, attended all the charrettes and, um, have been involved in, um, this, um, Redwood corridor, North Redwood corridor issue, and, um, this site, as Dan mentioned, is constrained. As we move up Redwood, those parcels become tighter and tighter, and, you know, from what I see, the more desirable parcels, um, are the ones adjacent to Trader Joe's. So the ROIC site and the Dairyman site, they're larger sites, um, and they have worked, those property owners have worked together to try to come up with a plan, and there is interest currently in a hotel. Um, I, I see this building, if it didn't work out, um, which I hope does not happen, but, um, it would even house a fitness center. I mean, a fitness center would be, could fit into a building like that. So it does lend itself to other, uh, uses. Um, I do have, I, I do have a couple of questions on parking, which maybe I should, can I ask that now? Is it right to swing that way?
Yes, absolutely.
Is this okay? Thank you. Um, it's got ten spaces, two are handicap, and that leaves you with eight spaces. You have six employees, is what the report indicated. So we have other mar- parking along the frontage road there. Has anybody looked at that, those spaces, any staff members, to see what, um, are they vacant during the day? Is there, I mean, are, is there flexibility? So if somebody came, you got six employees, I mean, conceivably, if all six employees are there, there at the same time, which maybe they wouldn't I mean, conceivably, if all six employees are there, there at the same time, which maybe they wouldn't be, you'd end up having two spaces left. So I just, I always have parking issues, so I, or concerns, so I just wanted to run that past staff.
Yes, so let me step back. So yeah, they've got ten proposed. The zoning code, our parking standards states nine.
Right.
And our parking standards are sort of a minimum and a maximum, you're supposed to be right there, due to the sort of idea that at some point this could change into something else. And that ten fit in there, we thought that was fine to go over, over one, the maximum, what our code would state. Additionally, I looked at the amount of frontage along the building and I came up with two to three. And this would be in that area where they'd be reconstructing the sidewalk. So there would be about two to three parallel spaces in the northbound direction. And then just looking at the site plan that Dan produced, it looks like there's six to seven spaces, the diagonal spaces, in the southbound direction directly in front of the site. So from staff's perspect, perspective, giving the current amount of use out there and the proposed use that it's adequate. And Paul could speak a little bit better, the applicant, to this. But sort of, it's very much a, a quick drop-off pickup type sort of use with the, the dog kennel facility. And I envision any of that retail, it might happen during the dog pickup or drop-off or maybe just at other times stopping by to pick up some sort of toy at the retail.
Well, and certainly the retail business could attract more foot traffic and cars.
Definitely.
But there is flexibility. I mean, there is flexibility on the road there for additional parking.
Right, right. And I see envisioned as the lots to the north and south are redeveloped. Right now, basically that entire corridor, there's either no sidewalk or it's basically a curb cut type sidewalk where people are just pulling in, parking right in front of the businesses, which is what was currently happening at this site. And then they've, they've added the onsite parking. So if the rest of this stretch from Golden Gate to Rush Creek develops in a similar manner, we would be gaining additional off-street parking as the corridor develops while also retaining the largely unused on-street parking along that stretch.
Okay, all right, good. That was just one of my concerns. But then again, I do, I echo the comments of Commissioner Tierney and Dawson. And it, it could be a great improvement to the, to the corridor.
Thank you. As for myself, you, you got to start somewhere. And I think there's a popular notion that somehow government is going to move in and develop this area, when in fact, the reality is private property owners are what drives development. And they're working under the economic constraints of the current, current market. Yes, in, at the start, we had a grand vision for the North Redwood corridor. And it would be great if we could round up all the property owners and sing kumbaya and come up with a great plan that, you know, everybody's walking around, creating community. I mean, honestly, I believe that would be great. But again, you got to start somewhere. And this, this use seems to have the ingredients that can help create that spark. So it's going to start generating foot traffic, driving traffic. Folks who are bringing their, their dog over there, well, they're, maybe they're going to walk their dog there and they're going to walk past Starbucks or the donut shop or Trader Joe's or whatever on the way, pick something up. Maybe, you know, we've got the new housing development potentially going in across the street. There's going to be more homeowners, more pets in the area potentially. Something I've noticed in Nevada is I feel like a lot of times there's business owners kind of waiting on the edge, wondering who's going to jump in the pool first. And this is maybe that first splash we're looking for. And I, and I think that, you know, I agree with my fellow commissioners. I, you know, when this project first hit our desk, I was kind of scratching my head about park a pup and I was worried that we were going to get a pet smart. And what was it going to look like? And gosh, maybe we'll get a, another big box store right next to it, which isn't, I think, the vision that we were in, aiming for with the North, North Redwood corridor. But as I read through the staff report, I thought it was really well put together. The resolution was well put together. It looked at all the different angles, the, the noise considerations, the odor and vector considerations. Having reports prepared by qualified professionals. The location of this site for a boarding facility is, is actually kind of perfect. You got the Smart Train running by, you got the freeway behind it. The Redwood, just Redwood Boulevard in and of itself has a, a pretty high degree of traffic. It's, it's not a pristine bucolic setting. It's, it's a part of our, you know, kind of our, it's our city's area of rebirth and redevelopment and that kind of quasi-industrial development that's slowly dying away. I, I think that the design changes that were done were, were really thoughtful. I, I have to admit, it makes me a little bit sad that they were done, you know, with the, with the thought in mind, like, what if this doesn't work? You know, I think most business owners that dive in don't really have a plan B. And I, I echo Commissioner Wernick's intent or her wish that, yeah, this is something that works and it, it helps create that spark that, you know, we see a really healthy, vibrant kind of corridor develop up around that. With respect to parking, I, you know, again, I was, thank you for asking the question, Commissioner Wernick. I, I think it's a, a good point. But at the same time, when I was reading through the staff report, it meets the city's standards. There's adequate street parking, there's, there's adequate elbow room for, for moving around there and parking. I, I appreciate that staff did analysis of not only compliance with the, the Redwood corridor plan, but also the current general plan, the draft general plan. That's a lot of, that's a lot of heavy lifting. And, you know, it was evident in the staff report that all these, these issues were, were considered and taken into consideration. The design, when I first looked at it, the south elevation, I had a bit of a concern about, you know, just in, in the sense that it was just this big concrete brick wall. But Commissioner Dawson brings up a great point that that provides an opportunity for, for zero lot line development that helps, again, forward that vision of the north, north corridor. On the other hand, if something doesn't come in and do development right up against the, that building, maybe since the, the art requirement was kind of left as an open item, maybe that becomes a mural. Maybe that becomes, you know, some kind of a, an opportunity, a blank canvas for a local artist to do something on. I, you know, again, perhaps that's a bit idealistic, but it'd be kind of a neat idea. So that's, that's where I'm at with things. Fellow commissioners, did you want to discuss, does anybody else have comments or merits issues that they'd like to explore or discuss?
And for the parking, it's, this isn't like a school where there's a thirty-minute drop-off and pickup time where everybody descends on the place at once, so I don't see that being an issue. And the blank wall, considering there's a Quonset hut next to it, I'm not sure there's a big issue there.
Yeah.
But be that as it may, I'll, I'd be happy to make a motion to approve the resolution. I just lost where it was. Resolution approving the sequoia categorical exemption and granting a use permit to allow the construction and operation of a dog boarding and grooming facility and approving the design aspects of the proposed development.
Second. And, and with that second, it would incorporate the changes. I think there were a couple of date changes.
Right.
In the wheres is.
Right.
Needed to be addressed.
Before we take a vote, is there any further questions, comments, conversation, discussion?
Comments after we take the vote, if that's okay?
Very well. Seeing no further questions, comments, I'll start with Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Commissioner Wernick?
Aye.
Commissioner Tierney?
Aye.
And aye as well. So the, the motion passes. Mr. Dana, I believe that I can speak for the commission and say best of luck to you and congratulations on the birth of your child.
Can I, um, can I make some comments? So I, I just want to, I want to tell you, I work retail and I, I know how hard it is in small retail. I helped my girlfriend with her store here in Nevada. And I really appreciate small businesses and homegrown businesses. I think it, it, it just brings a lot more to a business. You know, I definitely was concerned with the appearance of the San Rafael facility, but I, I did have a sense that the Dana family was, this is their, this is really their vision. I, I know that some people are going to have some issue with what they've just perceived as a kennel. But I think that this is a incredible catalyst to jumpstart investment in the Redwood corridor. We've been waiting a long time. I've lived in Nevada for almost thirty-six years. I used to love that stretch because it seemed so quiet and now all I see is potential. So I really, I thank you for making this investment. I, I also, you know, my, when my girlfriend and I had this store, it was her store, but I worked for her years ago. We had a small pet area in the back of the store and it was hugely successful. We don't have room for it in the, in the building that we have, for the space that we have now. We do babies, so if you need a baby gift, come to the Pacheco Plaza, put a little plug in there. And I also, again, I, I work in the Pacheco Plaza, which is a shopping center that was redesigned by Dan McDonald. And I know the quality of his work, I respect his work. And so I, I'm confident that this will be a real improvement to the Redwood corridor. So I'm sorry to give you a bit of a hard time at first, but it's my due diligence. I need to do that as a planning commissioner and I wish you the best of luck.
Great, thank you. All right, next item on the agenda is general business. So staff, what do we, what do we got on the table? Actually, you know what, let's take a, let's take a five-minute recess and then we'll move on to general business. We'll see you back here at eight thirty-three.
We'll see you back here at eight thirty-three.
One is a use permit for a Montessori preschool out at Hamilton Field. And then the second one is a general plan amendment involving the McPhail's property. That's at the intersection of 37 and 101, just south of Vintage Oaks. And so those two projects, staff is working on the report packages for those. And if all goes well, those packages will be ready and out to the commission. And just to note, the, the meeting on the 18th will be held here again. The city hall is still undergoing audiovisual upgrades through the balance of the month. So I think we'll round out 2018 in the school district chambers here. And then moving into 2018, the first meeting for the commission falls on January 1st. So we have canceled that meeting, and it will be followed up by meetings in, on January 15th, and then February 5th. And at this time, we don't have anything tentatively scheduled for those two meetings early in 2018. But if you have been taking a glance at the tentative agendas, we have quite a few items down in the pending category. And we've moved those projects there because we are getting close to having environmental review documents done, which is usually the last hurdle before the project goes public and comes to the planning commission. So, oh, go ahead.
The January 15th meeting is still in play, because that's Martin Luther King holiday.
Ah, okay. I'm, I'm looking at the tentative agenda, so if that is in fact a holiday.
That's the problem with January.
Yeah, we start to lose meetings. So, okay. So I will check on that and update the tentative agenda. I am assuming, not having a 2018 calendar here, that would be canceled. So I will, I'll follow up with the commission on that one. Other than that, there's nothing else to report at this time.
Great. Commissioners, Commissioner Tierney?
Yeah, I'm, remember the sign, the discussion we had, the wood, the corner of Redwood and?
Wood Hollow.
The Wood Hollow sign.
Yeah, how's that coming?
Or, excuse me, Woodside Office Center sign. That was approved by the city council, and staff is working with the applicant to revise the design of that sign, and then hopefully reach agreement, and then they'd be able to pull a permit and construct their sign.
Okay. And then about a month ago, you polled us, asking if rather than just the first and third Mondays, it's second and fourth. Are you, is there something up?
We still need to talk to the city attorney. We were actually working with the attorney's schedule in terms of having coverage at the commission meeting. So I will have another conversation with Veronica and see how her schedule's working out for 2018. And then perhaps at the December 18 meeting, we could come back with any proposed modification moving forward.
And were there commissioners that had other commitments, or?
No, the general sense of staff was that the commission was flexible on that particular issue. That's what I thought.
Okay, great. Commissioner Wernick?
I was gonna say, we don't wanna forget that Thursday, we have our.
Oh, yes.
Our holiday party with the DRC.
And I should mention that this past Saturday, I, Commissioner Tierney and Commissioner Wernick, attended the Sonoma State's annual planning.
Conference.
Convention conference, I was looking for the word there. Very, very nice conference. One of the topics of, of, you know, late issue is the fires in the North Bay. And there were several community development directors there whose cities were affected by those fires. And I thought it was interesting to hear the efforts that they're going through to help folks who have lost their homes, or their homes have been damaged. So that was an interesting topic. There was also the commercial cannabis, or the recreational cannabis, which will be descending upon California next month. And there was a, a sort of a legal update that was provided from an attorney who specializes in that particular practice. And then the other conversation was about general plan guidelines, and active living, healthy eating, social justice, environmental justice issues as it relates to general planning. So it was a nice conference, and I, I've certainly walked away with some new information and, yeah.
No, for, the four hours were jammed. It, it was nonstop. That was excellent information, you know, the changes for general plans, and, and a lot of, particularly the fire, the, you know, firestorms in Napa and elsewhere. I mean, the city of Napa, five disasters they've had in the last three years. And so rather than planning for them as, you know, exceptions, they're, they're looking at it as the norm. And, you know, what does that trigger? You know, having to think about floods, and, you know, earthquakes, and all those kinda stuff, and sort of as, as the norm, was kinda eye-opening about, you know, the process and what we need to be doing. So, yeah, I, I would encourage the planning commission and staff to attend as much as possible these things. It was very good.
Yeah, I thought it was really helpful. The panel that they had, talking about the North Bay fires, they had a lot to offer. I mean, there was a lot, a lot of things that you would never consider. But I, I actually would be fascinated to see, especially in Santa Rosa, with that coffee park, how, how that rebuild is gonna go. That is gonna be fascinating to watch. How many people are gonna stay, rebuild? How many people are gonna sell? They talked about upzoning certain areas. They, I mean, they definitely are pushing densification and transit-oriented development. So see how that goes over in their community and what they do. So I just think it'll be a really interesting effort to follow and just see how it's handled and, and what happens.
There was an article in the Chronicle today.
Article in the Chronicle today about that, the number of lots that are, got for sale signs on them. A lot of it's being driven by people who are underinsured, that are not in a position to be able to rebuild, because they don't have sufficient coverage to, to pay for it. So they're essentially forced out.
Because they had lousy insurance agents.
Well, I mean, it's, you gotta watch it. I mean, if you've been in a house for 20 years, it's easy to have, sort of forget about stuff. You just write a check every year to cover it. And if you're not paying attention, you know, if you make improvements to the house and don't account for it, then.
Yeah, you need to, I mean, I'm, I'm.
Comes back to bite you.
I'm married to an insurance agent, and it's interesting because I have made phone calls in his office, calling policyholders to do reviews. And I think they, people think, you know, we're just trying to drum up business. But interesting, in my husband's business, how many phone calls he got as soon as those fires started. People wanting to make sure that they were adequately covered. And it is a huge lesson that, God forbid, you should ever have a total loss like that. It's the worst thing for an insurance agent. There's a state farm agent in Santa Rosa. Out of her book of business, she's had over 140 losses. I mean, it's, I mean, that's just devastating, just to even, I, I can't imagine. But, yeah, you do, you, it's not a good thing to be underinsured.
Right. And I believe that they said they were setting up a whole separate office just to handle such a deluge of work. You know, they're saying, you know, give it two or three years. And so now you're temporary housing for two or three years. If you did just get the kind of insurance that it's reimbursable, that means you cough it up upfront and then turn in the bills. And so I think that's gonna be a huge burden for people to be able to find, you know, the money from a bank or from any other source.
Well, they pay, they'll pay for it. I mean, insurance companies will pay for it as you go along. But they only give you 24 months. I don't think it's after. I don't.
Right, there's either replacement or reimbursement. And replacement means you get a check.
No, but there's replacement, but you get, now, your, your living expenses while you're displaced are covered under your homeowner's policy.
Yeah, right. I think they all vary.
I, I better not plug my husband's business.
But, but needless to say.
Review with your agent.
It is be really, you know, a lesson to watch it. I mean, one of the things they talked about is the utilities are all pulling together to try and just cut one trench, so they can underground the utilities. And, and what a difference that'll make, you know, not having wires overhead, and not having, you know, the various utilities tearing open the road all the time, you know. Things like that, I thought were quite interesting, and, and, you know, our master planning at the best.
Well, one of the fellows in that panel talked about, maybe Steve, you can remember more of it, or Peter. In an area that is at high fire risk, if you're in a wooie, building, didn't they say, you know, not building with wood? So not building a wood-framed house. But then when you think about earthquake safety and earthquake, I mean, how do you do that? Your perils that you could face are not just fire, but earthquake and wind damage. So that should be interesting.
Right. And then there was a little discussion about, you know, infilling, and it was near the end, and, you know, the tiny house. How many communities actually have minimums? That a lot of these homes that could be innovative and could provide some kinda housing just wouldn't be allowed. And that you have to, you know, I believe this, I'd forget how many units this person bought, but he had to go all the way to Sedona, Arizona to be able to place them someplace. And so as much as the tiny house is growing and is extremely popular, it's not necessarily gonna fit into, you know, communities when you actually need them. Anyhow, it was a fascinating conference, and we'll try and do it again next year.
All right, next item on the agenda is adjournment. Any last words? Seeing none, we are adjourned.